You're live again.
Okay, we concluded our executive session with no action taken. Now go on to the rest of the meeting. My report for the month of September. And at board of supervisors meetings, and committee meetings. I attended a special meeting of board on the 30th. Tended a meeting about. In for tourism and occupancy tax municipal distribution of that program. Did the C S E A union negotiation sessions. I attended a county audit meeting and we had a good audit again. So that's always good. Kudos to treasurer's office for keeping us on the straight and narrow. And then I attended various budget meetings throughout the year. So we'll go to chairs and we'll start with, we'll start with supervisor Casado.
Okay, the there'll be a meeting on the 26th, 1140 for environmental concerns and real property tax to go over the budget. Also wanted to point out, everyone has a copy of this. There'll be a public auction Saturday to 19th at 10 a.m. right here at the courthouse. That for me.
Supervisor Merlino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's really no report for tourism. We've finished our summer ads working on the fall ads. Most of the team is over at the balloon festival, setting up a booth up there. If you go up there, please stop to see them. The only other comment I have is working with the treasurer. As of this morning, occupancy tax has increased 3.7 million over the same time last year. And the next quarter starts tomorrow and we're looking for a higher sales tax in the last quarter. So we're really looking good in our tax. And when our next meeting is this coming Tuesday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Chau.
Yeah, so I have out of the legislative roles and government operations committee, we have one resolution before you, resolution number 315. And that is basically to ratify the actions of the chair of the board of supervisors and executing a grant agreement for the Center for Tech and Civic Life and not to exceed 50,000. And that's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor McGowan.
No report.
Supervisor Strainer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Health services met on August 20th and from that you've got resolutions 312 and 313. 313 is the jewel settlement and Mr. Elman or Mr. Tappin, tell me, did we decide that the jewel settlement is going into the health services budget? And it comes in what four different segments? And I'm not sure what the time period for that.
I don't recall the time segments either. It is, it does go in quarters and it comes into the health services budget. It's managed by.
Okay, he will be getting that money in her budget.
Jules has they pick.
Yeah, 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 bonus. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor E two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. August 21st, the economic growth committee met. Many thanks to supervisor Strau for chairing it in my absence. 307 came from that, which is firming up our climate smart task force with new appointments. We are currently a bronze level certification with that program, seeking to get to the silver level and get more favorable reviews for grants and other things. 308 is just consenting to the Warren Washington County I D A findings with regard to Adirondack radiology and Queensberry. They're going to have a new open MRI machine. So pilots and some sales tax relief for a period. 309 and 310 are kind of housekeeping annual things from workforce development. We got a grant funding update from our county planner in progress grants, grants that we've received and grant opportunities we want to apply for. Our next committee meeting is Thursday, and I think we're going to be looking at approval requests for millions of dollars of new grants from that department. Project advisory group with a comp plan met on the 10th hybridly. And lastly, I wanted to give a little shout out to Liza and Heather and our workforce development and tourism departments. They flawlessly executed a workforce hospitality tourism celebration through the generous hosting by Rebecca Woods team at the Great Escape on the ninth. A lot of awards were given and 320 members of that sector's workforce came in, were celebrated and had the whole park to themselves for the evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance budget committee met on August 30th. Out of that is eight resolutions that were addressed. The first is 301 supplemental appropriation. It affects five departments. Two items from contingent for a total of 48, 650. But resolution 302 amends the county budget. That's six departments increases in estimated revenues and appropriations. Resolution 321 is appropriating $500,000 of the general fund balance to cover the cost of criminal procedure law section 730 competency and restoration expenses. We hope that this will cover the rest of the year. This brings it up to 1.1 million this year. But we're not real confident that it will cover the rest of the year. Resolution 322 appropriates 496,990 dollars from the occupancy tax reserve. A881. It's for the 2024 spending plan for the towns and city and plus the remaining 25%. That goes to the towns and city. Resolution 323 is appropriating $500,000 of occupancy tax reserve to special events, and this pertains to previous resolutions, 237 and 282 of this year. Resolution 324 appropriates $100,000 of occupancy tax reserve. And this goes to a Warren County project. It's for the synthetic turf at SUNY. At SUNY Adirondack. Resolution 325 is authorizing issuance of up to $12 million in serial bonds for covert repair and replacement projects. And resolution 326 is authorizing serial bonds for 1.4 million dollars to pay Warren County's share in the cost of high voltage electrical equipment replacement also at SUNY Adirondack. The budget is in in process. It's up some, not as bad as it has been in other years, last couple of years, but it's still up and there's also a floor resolution to go above the tax cap. So I kind of got a feeling that looking at it, I think we're up about 4 million, but there's, there are reductions to be made. But I do believe we're not going to have, see, in the last couple of years, we've been fortunate that we had increases, such large increases in the sales tax that enable us to spend 10 million additional couple of years ago and in 9 million, about 9 million last year. But we're not that fortunate this year.
Supervisor Onion.
No report.
Supervisor Conover.
On no report.
Supervisor Mayday.
No report.
Supervisor Diamond.
No report.
Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County facilities did not meet last month. We had nothing. There's no report there. Our next meeting is Thursday, September 26th at 9 a.m. That's it. Thank you.
Supervisor Bisco.
Thank you, Chairman. The human services committee met on August 20th. We had a good discussions from that meeting came resolution 314. It's an agreement between Warren County Department of Social Services and the workforce development department. I encourage your support of that resolution. The committee will next meet on Tuesday, September 24th on or about 1120 a.m. We'll hear from veteran services, social services and the countryside adult home. Cornell Cooperative Extension will have their monthly meeting this coming Monday, September 23rd at 6 p.m. in Warrensburg and John Bogey director has passed out their monthly program update for your for your review. I had the opportunity at the invitation of the chairman to represent the Warren County at the Special Olympics Fall Games special event. That was this past Wednesday. The the Fall Games will take place the third weekend in October. I encourage everyone to find a location and check that out. It's inspiring. It's great competition and and we have a number of local athletes, including an athlete who whose family I've known for many years and she's going to be going over to Italy as a skier this coming year. And it's pretty exciting. So I encourage you to try to make that event. Certainly, the balloon festival this weekend is going to take a lot of time and and a lot of people will be in town. Be gracious, host of them. The Office for the Aging Picnic is just Tuesday from 10 to 2. I know we have committee meetings, but if you have a chance to to get up there maybe at the for the last hour or two of that event, it's it's at Echo Lake in Warrensburg and also the Glen Falls Senior Center is having their annual expo at Queensburg Hotel on Wednesday, September 25th from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. So if you need to know anything about senior services for any of your constituents, that's the place to to get the information. And finally, I'd like to recognize all of the proclamations that that we're offering this morning, but especially the domestic violence awareness month. My employer at Catholic Charities administers that program here in Warren County, and that's during the month of October. Who's my report? Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Page.
No report.
Supervisor Drossing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Criminal Justice Public Safety and Emergency Services Committee met on August 20th. We had a brief agenda as a result. For your consideration today, we have resolutions 303 through 306. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, September 24th at 9 a.m. When we'll have each of our agencies on the agenda. Thank you.
Report of county administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Most of last month was spent in budget meetings with supervisor Thomas, chairman Garrity. The deputy treasurer, assistant county administrator and and me and all the department heads. So you will start seeing the budgets presented to you at the committee meetings coming up this month. And we, of course, like to get, need to get the budget approved by November. And where we stand now, as supervisor Thomas said, we're about 3.9 million dollars over our assessed our adjusted property tax cap, which is 2.48%. Not as bad as last year, but in previous years, we've been able to take money out of the general fund unappropriated surplus to make the budget work. We don't have as much flexibility this year. So that's why we've come brought the floor resolution forward. We need to do it. The reason we brought it as a floor resolution, we realized it's a local law. We need to get it on the books now. We'll vote on it next month so it'll be in place by November. We're not saying we're going to bust the tax cap this year, but we need to have that flexibility because we're not sure, we're going to go through now. We'll spend a lot of time with the budget officer going through and and seeing what cuts we can make to department budgets. A lot of them did come in at the 5% cut that supervisor, the Thomas, the budget officer asked them to do. Unfortunately, those are the smaller departments. The larger departments were not able to do that. And there were some increases in the larger departments. So we'll take a close look at those this coming month. I would like to also commend the treasurer's office on the spotless audit. No reportable findings. That's really significant. When I was at NSA for nine years, we tried to get a clean audit and we finally did, but it took a lot to do that. So our, that means our books are in good shape downstairs.
What are you saying about NSA?
So I would like, last week was the NISAC conference and I'd like to give you some, we spent about three and a half hours with other, all the county administrators in a meeting talking about what supervisor McGowan mentioned today about unfunded mandates and all things that the state is requiring the counties now to pay for. And I just want to give you an update on some of the key items that came out of that. The first thing, and we talked about it before. The legislature did pass the ability to collect sales tax on short term rentals. Where that stands right now is it has not been called by the governor for signature. It passed both the assembly and the senate. There's a slim chance that's going to happen this year. And if it doesn't happen this year, NISAC is not going to push it any farther. It appears that Airbnb lobby is pretty strong. And they know it won't be called for before the election in November. And if it does get signed, it's probably going to get signed in the last remaining days of this year. But no one really expects that to happen right now, unfortunately. And we all kind of, we all supported that, tried to get the assembly and the senate to pass it, and they did. But I don't think, we don't believe the governor will sign it. And just for your information, so on the first of January 2025, chapter 741 that moves elections to even numbered years goes into effect. It impacts town supervisor, town board member, town clerk, highway superintendent in the towns, as well as county supervisors. Primarily in this case for Queensberry and Glen Falls. If you're elected to a two-year term in 2025, you'll be elected for a one-year term that ends in 2026 and then you'll run again in 2026. If you're elected on a four-year term in 2025, you'll be elected for three years ending in 2028 and then run again. If you're elected, if you serve a four-year term and you're elected in 2027, you'll be elected for three years ending in 2030. So those are basically the rules. It doesn't impact the village offices, city or village offices for school and fire district elections, and it doesn't impact the county sheriff, county clerk, DA and judges and town justices. State spending continues to increase at an unsustainable rate. The state state spending has increased by 35% since 2020, almost 8% per budget year. And then in addition to this, beginning in 2026, the state will be getting $5 billion less in federal funds. So everyone is kind of being poised for the next shoe to drop in 2026 when the state starts passing additional cost onto the county. So this is going to be a priority probably for NISAC and everyone over the next few years to try to determine what type of funding is going to be passed on to the counties. State Medicaid funding increased about $18 billion, will increase about $18 billion over the next five years. And that's a 93% increase. At the state, same time, the state will eliminate all county Medicaid funding assistance by 2026. So the state had previously been funding us at a 75% rate that had dropped to a 50% rate for Medicaid, and now it's down to, it's going to a 25% rate and then zero. New York has the most expensive Medicaid program in the nation, more expensive than the state of Texas and California combined. New York lost 631,000 more people in 2023. That's the highest in the nation. New York also had a 0.7% GDP growth, which is well below the 2.5 national, 2.5% national average. And we continue to have the highest structure, tax structure in the nation for both personal and corporate borrowers. State pension costs have gone up 8.6% this year, which was reflected in our 2025 budget. And the treasurer's office is finalizing the impact on us for both the pension costs and also the Medicaid cost. Sales tax collections continue to be strong. Up 3.9% over past year and 4 million more than the 2024 budget. So that is one good thing. Next year, the top three priorities for NISAC will be the CPL 730, we're putting additional money in the budget for that. This is the competency to stand trial evaluations that are done in the state. We started with $900,000. This year, we're putting another 500,000 in. We're going to budget over. We decided probably over a million dollars. We didn't do that yet in the budget, but probably we need to budget for over a million dollars next year. That's going to be one of the priorities for NISAC to try to get reimbursement for some of that. This preschool transportation cost, this is for people who need disabled children who need to be transported to preschools. Those costs continue to rise and there'll be push on that. And the last thing they'll push for is ability for counties to create special taxing districts for EMS. Everyone has agreed EMS system we have across the state is getting harder and harder to manage. And lastly, again, sales tax for short-term rentals will no longer be a priority. They think they've done as much as they could for that. And I'd like to then recognize some of our employee anniversary dates. Josette Kill, Social Services, 30 years. Brendan or Kelly Brendan, Office of the Aging, 30 years. Robert Legoy, Sheriff's Office, 30 years. Dana Hall, Public Health, 36 years. And Juliana Pearl, Social Services, 39 years. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Robert, any attorneys report today?
No report today from the county attorney. County attorney Elmer will have a report at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Communications.
We have reports from the county auditor, the August 2024 Real Property Tax Corrections, Adirondack North Country Association's 2023 Annual Report, and the Warren County Clerk's reporting of all monies received for fiscal year ended December 31, 2023. We also have a letter from Lillian Hayes, a Pottersville resident regarding the need for posted speed limit on Valentine Pond Road. And from the Town of Moro Planning and Zoning Office, we received a notice of public hearing regarding draft proposed local law number seven of 2024, which is a solar amendment.
Okay. Go to read the resolutions.
Proclamation numbers 30 through 34, resolution numbers 301 through 326, and the certificate of appointment were distributed to the board and posted to the Warren County website on Monday, September 16th. Floor resolution numbers one and two were distributed and posted yesterday. The proclamations before you are number 30 Preparedness Month, number 31 Suicide Prevention Month, number 32 Domestic Violence Awareness Month, number 33 for each week, and number 34 Special Olympics Support and Awareness Day. There are two floor resolutions also in your packets and motions will be needed to bring those to the floor. So floor number one.
Okay, can we have a motion to bring floor resolution number one to the floor? Supervisor E two, do we have a second? Supervisor Diamond. Any discussion? Supervisor E or Supervisor Page.
I just have a question on floor resolution number one. When we waive the standing rule in this capacity, are we specifically just waiving it to local law number six?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's all then. Thank you.
Do we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those favor signify by saying aye. Post here.
Floor resolution number one is now number 327 and a motion for floor number.
A motion to prove floor, bring floors number two to floor. Motion by supervisor E two, do we have a second by supervisor Diamond? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay.
And floor resolution number two will be 320.
328, okay. Any recusers for many resolutions before we discuss it?
Mr. Chairman, I recuse myself from resolution 323. Should I do that now or not at this point? There will be a potential conflict. I believe some of that 500,000 went to fund Winter's Dream, which I sat on the coalition.
So 323 is already marked as a roll call when we get that.
At that point, okay.
Here we have it. All right. Recuses. Discussion on resolutions. Anybody wish to discuss any resolution? Supervisor Bruno.
Thank you. Regarding 301 and 302. 301, making supplemental appropriation. 302, amending the budget. Question on both of those. I didn't add these up. Are these basically a wash? In other words, making supplemental appropriations, we take from one code, move it to another code. I'm wondering how does that affect budget, if at all? And some of these are fairly, are pretty sizable. For instance, Department of Social Services. First one. Social Security salaries regular, moving it over to social services salaries over to $50,000. There are others in there. I don't want to spend a lot of time, but amending the budget, we have various departments here and estimated revenues and appropriations. Are those all people out, so to speak? Does anybody know?
So on 301, that's the transfer. Those are departments that are moving funds around within their budgets. So there's no, unless, when you get to the bottom, the last page, there are some that are transfers from contingent. It says special items, that last grouping.
Right.
That's where we're taking money out of the contingent account and moving it into, in this case, the county attorney and board of elections. So that's increasing their budgets. The rest of them are all moving funds, existing funds around in the budget. As far as 302, that's amending the budget. Typically, that's when we're bringing in money. So you'll see the revenues and the appropriations. That's revenue and expense. They even out. So that's just bringing new money into the budget and showing we're going to spend it.
And that could be grants too, right?
Yeah, you'll see one, if you look on health services, you can see the jewel money coming in. That's the first one. And so that 95,000 is new money coming in.
Right.
Then the appropriations, that's where they're breaking up that money to spend in different codes. So that all flushes out.
You answered my question. Thank you. Any other discussions on resolution supervisor Diamond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to discuss resolution 323. It's in for roll call vote today. What I'd like to see it, documentation in front of us includes us to move $500,000 from the occupancy tax reserve to specific events. I'd like to see the events split. You've got an appropriation included in this resolution. 250,000 for Winter Dream startup cost. You have 150,000 for Winter Dreams display enhancements. And then you have 100,000 for the balloon festival. I wholeheartedly support the balloon festival at $100,000. So what I'm asking is to separate these out into two different appropriations. So I can vote. I still have a opposition to the appropriation to the Winter Dream. So I'd like to be able to support the balloon festival. But the way the resolution is writ now, if I vote against this resolution, I'm voting against the balloon festival also. So I'd like to have that separated out, please.
Is that 323?
Yes.
How do we, what will we do?
I'm just looking at these because I think they are split up.
Can you do just by going to resolution numbers? I don't know which one is 237.
So 324, the 100,000 that's showing there, that's for the SUNY Adirondack.
No, no, I'm talking about 324.
You're talking about 500,000. The total money.
Okay with SUNY Adirondack. And I'm put okay with the appropriation to the towns and villages. The one that I'm talking about is specifically the three resolutions appropriations for Winter Dreams two, two for Winter Dreams and one for balloon festival.
What we have to do is amend this resolution to change the amount, and then you'd actually are going to need to introduce new resolutions. So we'll have to waive the rules. Well, we'll have to waive the rules because it's not in writing.
And what do we do first? Ask for a vote to amend?
Then 323 to show the amount you want here. So change this to the balloon festival. It would just need to be the amount for the balloon festival.
Okay, so supervisor Diamond makes a motion to amend resolution number 323 to split it out, and then we'll do floor resolutions to split it out. But somebody second that. Second by supervisor Runyon. You want a voice folder? You want to do just?
Do you have anybody who's opposed?
All those favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post? Okay, they seem to be in favor. So 323 will remain, would change to 100,000 for the balloon fest. Thank you. Supervisor Conover.
Yeah, I could introduce the motion to waive the rules to introduce the new resolution that identifies the Winter's Dream funding by itself.
by itself. So, they can be voted.
So, you're making a motion to waive the rules?
So that it can be introduced.
Does somebody second the waiver Supervisor Marino? All those favor waiving rules signify by saying aye. Okay.
I do not recall what the Winter's Dream amount is.
The Winter's Dream amount, is this the old amount or the new amount was two?
Two fifty plus one fifty.
It's, it's a total four hundred thousand, I think, which they requested recently through the occupancy tax committee.
I'm sorry. Mr. Diamond is making a motion to?
So, the, so you motion, make a motion to, for a new resolution for the, how much is it now?
It was four hundred thousand, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's four hundred thousand total. It was two hundred and fifty thousand for the advertisement and the startup of Winter's Dream event and an additional one hundred and fifty thousand that would go towards enhancements to the, to the overall event.
This is for the twenty twenty-five event, correct?
Or the twenty twenty? For the twenty twenty-five event.
Okay.
So, we do the four hundred thousand and one, or do you want?
Is everybody comfortable if we do four hundred thousand together for, for Winter's Dream?
So, I'd like to, I just would like to remind, and I don't have the resolution number, that this has, the approval of this has already, that's already been approved for the four hundred thousand. What we're doing now is just approving whether we're going to fund it, I think.
Right. Whether it comes out or?
Where it comes out of.
The contracts are already approved. This is appropriate.
Yeah, the contracts were already approved.
This is appropriating it out of the oxy tax reserve. So, we have a motion by Supervisor Diamond to bring this forward, four hundred thousand. Do we have a second? Second by Supervisor Bruno. Any discussion? All of the favorite discussion? All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so the waiving the rules is now three twenty-nine, and the Winter's Dream funding will be three thirty, and that will be a roll.
Roll call vote.
Yep.
Any other discussion, any other resolutions? Supervisor Padgett?
Yeah, um, got a little bit of a question and a statement on floor resolution number one and number two. If my memory serves me right, we're potentially going to be exceeding the tax cap. Instead of being at under two percent, we are going to be around two and a half percent. Am I correct to say that essentially this increase is getting directly passed on to the residents of Warren County, our year-rounders and people that own property in Warren County by virtue of owning parcels? If we did change the sales tax, pass on the, or increase the sales tax a half a percent, a percent, whatever the number that the Board of Supervisors ends up agreeing to, or, or maybe it doesn't even get put forward, that would be passed on to a wider range, including visitors, just people on, you know, vacation transient guests. I'm just making the point to the Warren County Board of Supervisors, and I could be incorrect in saying this, and please correct me if I am, that we are, by exceeding the cap, we are directly passing this on to our residents rather than spreading it across in a more broad range in that capacity.
I want to just correct. The resolution we're passing today is just to allow us to set a public hearing to discuss whether we want to raise a cap. This, this resolution doesn't approve or disapprove of the cap. We're just scheduling a public hearing. Am I correct?
It is introducing a local on scheduling the public hearing. But as per the county attorney, it does require a sixty percent weighted vote by state law.
Right.
So, it'll be sixty percent to introduce and sixty percent to adopt as well there.
So, and just, so, go ahead.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. And so, if I could just clarify that, the, it's not instead of, or it's not in lieu of sales tax increase. So, I'd just like to remind everyone, if we did, if we vote to approve a sales tax increase in the board in the next remaining months of this year, it would be submitted to the legislature next year for vote by both the Assembly and the Senate to agree to let us increase our sales tax and then signed by the governor sometime next year in twenty twenty-five for implementation in January twenty twenty-six. So, we aren't in a position of being able to say we could do an either or this year, increase sales tax or property tax to make the budget. So, I think that's one of the reasons we're bringing this forward. So, we have that flexibility if we need to. And again, we're going to try to make cuts to the budget, and we're going to try to do what's smart to keep from having to exceed the tax cap. No one likes to do that. I will tell you that in the meeting we have with the county administrators, over half of the county administrators recognize that they're going to have to exceed their tax cap this year as well because their budgets are in the same position as ours. We just have a lot of costs that have gone up for things and a lot of unfunded mandates that we're funding.
But Supervisor Padgett, your statement was correct. If, if it didn't go on property taxes and there was a way, if we had the money through sales tax, then it would go out to a broader.
I, I appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to make it clear that in effect, we are not this year specifically. We don't have a choice as Mr. Tafflin just explained to us. But, you know, if we, if we continue to need to exceed the cap, if we did this year, it does in fact affect our residents a hundred percent instead of getting spread out to a broader base. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on any other discussion, any other resolutions? Anybody for the public? Okay, then I guess we're ready to vote on resolutions. And roll calls, everybody's satisfied with the roll call votes, correct? Okay, Amanda, sorry, we're jumping around a little bit, but we're voting on resolutions.
All right. Resolution three oh one, making supplemental appropriations. Mr. Cresito?
Aye.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh? Oops, I'm sorry, stepped out. Uh, Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh? We're voting on resolution number three oh one, making supplemental appropriations.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Are you a yes on that one?
My, yeah.
All right, thank you, sir. Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three oh two, amending Warren County budget for twenty twenty-four. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three eleven, enacting local law number five of twenty twenty-four entitled A Local Law Repealing Local Law Number Six of two thousand and eleven, A Truth in Taxation Local Law to Deliniate State Mandates and Property Taxes and Authorizing a Public Hearing Thereon. Sorry, that is, that's enacting. There is no public hearing. That's just copied over incorrectly. Okay. Uh, Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, no.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
No.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
No.
Any resolution passes with seven hundred eight votes in favor? Resolution three sixteen, amending table of organization and Warren County Salary and Compensation Plan for twenty twenty-four to create and delete physicians within the Department of Social Services. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover? Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three twenty-one, authorizing appropriation of additional funds from the General Fund Unappropriated Fund Balance to the Office of Community Services Budget. Uh, Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three twenty-two, authorizing appropriation of funds from the occupancy tax reserve to the tourism budget. This is for the four hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three twenty-three as amended, this is authorizing appropriation of funds from the occupancy tax reserve to the tourism budget for the hundred thousand dollars to the balloon festival. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three twenty-four, authorizing appropriation of funds from the occupancy tax reserve to the tourism budget. This is for a hundred thousand dollars to SUNY Adronic. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
We have.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three twenty-five, authorizing certain culvert repair and replacement projects throughout the county and authorizing the issuance of up to twelve million dollars in serial bonds. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yeah.
Mr. McGowan?
Um, yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three twenty-six, authorizing issuance of up to one point four million serial bonds of the county of Warren to pay for a portion of the cost of the high voltage voltage electrical infrastructure replacement at SUNY Adronic. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Resolution passes with seven hundred and ninety votes in favor. Resolution three twenty-eight, this is introducing proposed local law number six of twenty twenty-four entitled a local law to authorize overriding the property tax levy limit established by General Municipal Law three C for the twenty twenty-five Warren County budget and authorizing public hearing thereon. For the twenty twenty five Warren County budget and authorizing public hearing thereon, this one does require a sixty percent weighted vote. Um, just make sure I'm in the right spot, here we go, all right. Mr. Cresito?
Yes.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayday?
Yes.
Mr. Diamond?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Driscoll?
Yes.
Mr. Patchett?
Yes.
Mr. Drossi?
Yes.
Chairman Garrity?
Yes.
Okay, that passes with seven hundred ninety votes in favor. And resolution three thirty, this is the new one we just did for the occupancy tax appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars to the tourism budget for winter's dream funding. Oh, Mr. Cresito, you are refusing. Mr. Cresito is leaving for the record and I'm marking him absent. Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Mr. Straugh?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Strainer?
Yes.
Mr. E two?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.